Okay, everybody. We're gonna get started here. Are we ready, council members? I think we're ready. Hey, welcome to the Kent City Council meeting here. Today is Tuesday, November 21st, and the first thing we're doing is our committee as a whole, which starts today at four o'clock. So, we have, how many items we have? We have five items up here to get started here, and I'm gonna ask for roll call, please, Kim.
Thank you. Council President Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Core.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaux. Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner. I hear, I see her saying "here." Thank you.
Her lips, her lips are moving, we do know that. Hey, where's Pat? Any changes to the agenda, sir?
No changes.
Okay, councilmember, any changes?
Nope.
Okay, I ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move for the approval of the agenda as written.
Second.
Got a motion and a second in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify, percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. We'll move on to our operation portion
of the meeting, and we have approval of the minutes from November 7th.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of the minutes for November 7th, 2023.
Second.
Get it together, councilmember. Okay, got a motion, a second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify, percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. We can move on to item B, payments of the bills.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for payment of the bills.
Second.
We're gonna get this together. Got a motion, a second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify, percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. Item number C, Joe, we're gonna talk about our third quarter investment report. How you doing, Joe?
Doing well, thank you.
Alrighty.
Joe, I'm the cash and investment officer in the finance department, and today I'll be presenting the investment report for the third quarter of 2023. So, at the end of the third quarter, we had cash in the bank earning 5.5% earnings credit. That's a credit that offsets our banking fees with US Bank. Currently, we're earning enough to offset the fees in full. Cash balance of about $2.9 million. For our Russian State Investment Pool, that's our short-term liquid portfolio earning 5.35%. That portfolio reacts very quickly to the current market conditions, so right now it's earning a generous interest rate. Balance of $160.6 million in that portfolio. And then we have our longer-term managed portfolio that we've been building over a number of years now. That's our long-term portfolio with maturities up to five years. Currently earning 1.87% with matured maturity, 727 days market value, or just over $200 million in investment total, almost $211 million. And one thing to bring to light, we have begun our incremental increase.
Sorry, General.
And our investment advisory report has incrementally increased the long-term portfolio by approximately $10 million per quarter. So, in the third quarter, we made a few purchases for that portfolio. In the fourth quarter, we have already done some pensioned significant portion for the portfolio, and the state investment pool, that red portion, that very liquid portion, on a third, and two westerns, in various cash and investments. Next, we have our five-quarter comparison of cash and investments by type. The gray line at the bottom is cash. Right now, we're keeping just enough cash available to meet our short-term cash flow needs. State Investment Pool is that pink line, as you can see, it's an increase over here. The yellow-orange line in the middle is our long-term portfolio, and as you can see, even with the increase to our long-term portfolio in the third quarter, state investment pool balance still stays about the same. So, year over year, our total cash and investment portfolio has increased. And next, we have our three-year comparison, and this is total cash and investments. 2021 is the dark line at the bottom with 2023 at the top. One thing to point out, that 2021 and '22, we received those large deposits for ARPA funds that were one-time monies we received. So, 2023 really looks like a more typical cash flow that we see from year to year. Next, we have quarterly interest earnings, a five-quarter comparison. The dark blue line on the left is general fund earnings only. The light blue line is, bar is, all other funds combined. So, as you can see from the third quarter 2022 in comparison to the third quarter 2023, interest earnings are significantly up due to the increase in the market rates. Next, we have total cash and investments by fund. So, that total portfolio, this shows how much portion belongs to each of the various funds throughout the city. So, significant fund portions belong to the general fund, various street capital, utility, and insurance funds. Next, we have the long-term portfolio only. This excludes the cash and the state investment pool. If I could draw your attention to the bar chart at the lower left, the maturity distribution. We have significant portions of the portfolio maturing within the next year and even two years. This will allow us to, as investments mature, reinvest at the current higher yields and hold on to those, lock in those rates for a longer duration. So, we'll, over time, we'll see that duration extend out higher in the, in the longer term. Next, we have sector allocation analysis, and this is, this demonstrates policy compliance. So, as you can see, that all the various investment types are well within portfolio compliance with our city policy. And lastly, we have the portfolio allocation over four quarters, and really, this demonstrates that the overall allocation hasn't changed significantly, significantly over the four quarters. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Hey, thanks a lot, Joe. I have the opportunity to sit on this team here, and you guys does a phenomenal job, led by Paula and Michelle and so on. Just really great. Even I try to get some inside scoop on some stock, the devil money, they won't, they won't listen to me. So, but, but really, seriously, you guys just did a great job. We have a, we have a great finance team, and I think, you know, it's just really appreciative of all the work you guys do, the attention to details, and really just doing a good job with Ben Stewart of the City of Money. So, I just wanna say kudos to the finance team, and kudos to you, Joe, for really keeping your eyes on the ball. And even not listening to me, I give you kudos for that too, well, okay? Okay, councilmember, any question, concern, thoughts?
Good report.
Good report, and luckily, there's no action, so we can get that right this time, right? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number D, and we have an ordinance adopting the 2023 tax levy for 2024 budget, and then Paula will come again for adopting mid biennium budget. And D and E, along with you, Paula.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Council President Boyce, members of city council. I'm Paula Painter, the Finance Director. And in front of you right now is an ordinance that would adopt the 2024 property tax levy. That levy will increase our property tax revenue by 1% plus new construction. What that's gonna mean for the 2024 budget is that we're gonna be increasing the property tax revenue by $339,000 for a total of $34.8 million. For 2024, the city's assessed valuation came in at $32.8 billion. What that's gonna mean is our tax levy rate is gonna go up just slightly to $1.06 per 1,000 assessed valuation. If we assume that the average home is worth almost $600,000 in 2024, that would equate to about $637 in property tax that the city would receive for that home. Of a property tax bill, 11% of what you pay would actually come to the city of Kent. The rest of that would go to other organizations, such as the school district, King County, the fire district, et cetera. And I would be happy to take any questions that you might have on the property tax.
Thanks, Paula. Thanks for pointing out, when we do look at our property tax, there's a lot of bullets with lots of money, but the city is just a really small portion of that. So, thank you for really focusing, trying to keep that dollar value down. Councilmember, any question, concern for Paula? Nope, CNN, I'm gonna ask for a motion, please.
Right. Mr. President, I'm really excited about this one. We can, uh, let's just, I move to adopt ordinance number 4478, approving the property tax levy ordinance for the 2024 budget.
Second.
We have a motion, and we gotta take turn with these seconds here. We have a motion and a second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify, percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. Paula, next.
All right. So, the next ordinance I have in front of you today is the 2024 mid biennium budget adjustment. The mayor presented her proposed budget back on September 26th. During that time, after that time, we had several workshops where we had an opportunity to discuss the budget. That budget included changes to both operating and capital expenditures. There is a slight difference from the budget that you see in front of you today versus the one that you've seen the last time we met. There is an increase of about $750,000. The biggest portion of that is the salary survey that was done for our nonrepresented employees. It's been quite some time since those positions were looked at and compared to market. There, in addition to that, once we figured out what positions needed to be adjusted, we then had to go through and adjust our transfers out and our cost allocations. So, the number that you see on the screen really is not the true cost of that, because we did have to move money around, which kind of double counts those dollars, as you guys are very well aware by this point in time. So, the total 2024 budget is $444.6 million, of which $122.3 million is in the general fund. The general fund will be using $1.4 million of its fund balance during 2024. And again, overall, we had nearly $20 million in changes to our 2024 budgets compared to what was originally adopted. You know that those changes came, requests came with revenue to support the additional dollars or changes in expenditures to be able to do that. And at this point, that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Paula. I appreciate the mayor really bringing a flat budget to us, right? And also, there would have been some adjustment, but I also believe we have some phenomenal employees here at the city, and I think, you know, we need to make sure, when you look at the market data, that we are paying our employees comparable to what the market is paying. And I think that adjustment should probably keep us in place for about maybe three years plus. But I think, you know, what you guys did with the salary planning team, did awesome job, and we definitely want to make sure our employees is paid according to market and their peers. So, thank you for all the hard work. With that said, councilmember, any question, concerns?
No, CNN.
Tony, you okay? Okay, alright, I'll ask for a motion, please.
Yes, and I would address this motion to our newly-elected councilmember. The main thing that we have to do, the main responsibility of council is to do the budget, number one. Keep that in mind as you go through the next few years. Alright, Mr. President, I would move to adopt ordinance number 4479, approving the 2024 mid biennium budget modification ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I just wanna make a quick comment here. We have spent months and months and months looking over all of these ordinance for the adjustment. So, you may not see any question, because we already spent lots of time looking at this here. So, with that said, all in favor, signify, percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. Thank you. Michelle, you guys did such a good job. Make sure you take Thursday and Friday off, okay? Alright, we're gonna move on to item F, Tara Duckworth on the Verizon Wireless General Service Administration. Tara.
Good evening, Council President Boyce and councilmembers. I'm Tara Duckworth. I'm the Deputy Director of Information Technology. Tonight, I have two motion memos for you. The first one is from Verizon. It's to authorize the purchase using a federal supply contract through June 10th of 2025, and to extend the contract term in, that might be authorized if those purchases fall within established budget, and to ratify past actions that are consistent with that motion. We use Verizon Wireless for our wireless voice data services and equipment, and we've been purchasing them through a contract that is set to expire on December 2nd of this year. So, we need to move to the contract that doesn't expire until June 10th of 2025.
Thank you, Tara. Any question, concern, councilmember?
I'm just curious, are there any, are there any considerable changes to pricing with this contract?
No. The only change is that we've gone from approximately 850 devices to 900 total devices.
Thank you.
You're good.
Okay. Councilmember Fincher.
No, I changed my, I changed my mind. It was a question about some older equipment, radio equipment that we have, but I, no, no, thank you.
Okay, she has no question for you, Tara. Trust me, we have it together tonight, guys, trust me. Okay, how about a motion here, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I would move to establish, to authorize the mayor to sign the purchase order with Verizon Wireless under a federal supply contract, to sign future purchases orders under the contract through June 10th, 2025, and any extended contract term that may be authorized if those purchases fall within established budgets, and to ratify past actions consistent with this motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, in a discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify, percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. Okay, Tara.
All right. The second one is to authorize the mayor to sign a subscription renewal with NeoGov in the amount of $64,637.54, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT director and the city attorney, and to authorize the IT director to sign future renewals that are within established budgets, and to ratify past actions consistent with this motion. We use NeoGov for our city's learning management system, our public sector job boards, that's governmentjobs.com, and Insight, application for applicant tracking.
Thank you. Any question, councilmember? CNN, I'm gonna ask for a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a subscription renewal with NeoGov in the amount of $64,637.54, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT director and city attorney, to authorize the IT director to sign future renewals that are within established budgets, and to ratify past actions consistent with this motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, in a discussion, team. CNN, all in favor, signify, percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. Thank you very much, Tara. We're gonna move on to the public safety. I'm gonna turn this over to Chair Core.
Thank you, Council President. For public safety, we have information only Take Me Home program up, presentation, Sarah Wood, and Stacy Judd will be here to give us presentation on this new program.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Sarah Wood. I'm a community education coordinator with the Kent Police Department.
And I'm Stacy Judd, another community education coordinator with the police department.
We're here today to share with you a new free resource at the Kent Police Department, a program that the Kent Police Department has started. You all should have received one of these brochures at your spot there on the dais. It's called the Take Me Home Program, and it's a free new service offered by the Kent Police Department as a resource for families, as well as a resource for our police officers. It's a voluntary program for residents who want to register themselves or their loved ones, should they need special assistance, special, have special needs, or those who become disoriented or have a cognitive disability that may need help, extra communication out in the field, need extra de-escalation of situations, or even finding their way home. Families can visit www.kentwa.gov/take me home to register their loved ones or themselves. The information that they give us is kept confidential and accessed by officers should anybody need contact, should they need help in the field if an officer comes across them out there, if they need, or if there's a missing person that we need to get additional information on to help find them. And Stacy's gonna share what kind of information we collect from the residents that register with us.
And like, excuse me, Sarah mentioned, people can go and register their loved one online through the website, or if they're not, are not a fan of registering and putting information online, they can call us and we can kind of walk them through the registration process. All the information is on a private SharePoint site that not everybody has access to. Sarah and I are authors on those. We're the only ones that can enter or change information. Officers, our records department, there, we invite them to see the info, they can like, see the information on the SharePoint, but they cannot make any changes. Other than that, anybody else does not have access to see the information, so it is very private. Our basic information is collected on the individual, name, height, weight, contact information, emergency contacts, things like that, but also information that includes special interests that the person might have, where they go to school, where they work, even if they have social media pages. People can include the link to those pages so that when officers do come into contact with someone, they can go onto the SharePoint site and look, there's photos too. A photo is needed that goes along with the information, and they can look up, you know, this looks like the person that I'm talking to, or they can search. If all they have is a first name, they can search it by the first name. If it's a child and they say they like Spider-Man, then they can search Spider-Man, and that would come up in the special interests. And so, it just gives officers another tool to help them when they come across someone that maybe not be able to communicate as well, and then try to help find, find where they need to go. We have advertised the program through social media. We'll also be working with our adaptive ed program and the top school, top school through the Kent School District to get information out on this program. And we had first learned about it through the Renton Police Department, who kind of walked us through how they have their setup, and then we went and made our own version of it.
Thank you. I, I have a question, and then I think my colleagues have a question too. So, so, individuals who don't speak language, usually we've seen elderly going missing, so their families, how do they know about this program?
So, like, we first just started on social media advertising for it, but also through the senior centers, through any care, you know, senior homes that we have in the area, advertising through them as well to get them this information. I don't know, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I kind of did. I'm just thinking of those, the seniors, like, a lot of Asian men, we've seen in the past years going missing, elderly, and they have some health issues. They don't speak language, but they live at home. So, I try to reach out families, like, you know, similar to that, so they can sign up as well. Very helpful.
Absolutely. Any, any way that we can get it out there, we'd love to.
I think it's a great program. I think it'll help. I think it's a great program, I think it'll help our community, community members a lot, so. Councilmember Laramore.
Yes, my question was actually similar, it was about how we're reaching the family members of the elderly. And so, you know, I think, you know, what I heard is encouraging, I'm assuming, you know, hopefully the Kent reporter will pick this up and run with that. But yeah, the language issue I think is important as well for those communities.
Yeah.
And connecting with the cultural communities board members, I believe.
And we're really kind of learning as we go too, just because it's so new, and then I, you know, things pop up, it's like, oh yeah, we need to do that, so, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laramore. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Councilmember, so Stacy, you say that they have this program in Renton?
Correct.
Do you have any idea how many individuals have been found due to this program in Renton?
I don't, I don't know that, but I could certainly find out.
Would you?
Yeah.
I don't have much time, so you better hurry.
I will let you know tomorrow.
Oh, that's fine.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Answering me.
Okay, Councilmember Fincher.
Yes, thank you very much. Open Doors, one of our organizations here, they would be very interested in this information also. Do people have to like re-register every year, every three years, or once you're there?
Thank you for bringing that up. We will follow up with families on a yearly basis, especially to get new pictures or any updated information. So when we track it, we track when their information was input into the database, and then we'll follow up with them yearly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Boyce, Council President Boyce.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, this is for you, Cheryl, so maybe, this is a great program, maybe six months, and we can bring this back just to see how well they work. You guys do a phenomenal job behind the scenes, we only get to see you twice a year, so I make it three times a year, so Councilmember Cor, we can bring them back, and just to see how this is working, I think it's a great program, so appreciate everything you guys do, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, thank you. Thank, and that's a great point, Councilmember Boyce. And yes, Sarah and Stacy are really engaged in a lot of programs that we do here in Kent Police Department, so, thank you for all the work that you do. And back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Chair. So, we'll move on to Public Works, and Councilmember Laramore, would you like to do Public Works?
I believe I would like to. Council President?
Councilmember Fincher, Public Works, please.
Every time. Anyway, we're going to hear from Eric Preston about some, basically housekeeping, some, some traffic signs and all over in the Panther Lake area.
Absolutely, well, good afternoon, Council President, council members. I am Eric Preston, the City Traffic Engineer, and yeah, wanted to discuss proposed parking code modifications in the Panther Lake annexation area. You might remember, we cleaned up the same area in regards to speed limits earlier this year, and so now cleaning up some parking code revisions, and just focusing on the arterials right now. Early next year, we'll be bringing back a lot more that are in the neighborhoods, schools, miscellaneous truck signs. So, currently Kent City Code 938, Chapter 40, covers no parking on arterials with four lanes or more. Today, we're gonna be focusing on these arterials that are not listed in Chapter 20, that are two lanes. And so, police really likes it when we list out all the individual arterials, and obviously the two lanes are not covered by Chapter 40. And so I'm gonna go to the map, because it'll be easier to understand that list. So, the green lines are your east-west streets, and blue lines are north-south. So, starting at the top, we have 192nd Street from the city limits at 108th to the city limits at 124th. And we have 196th Street from the city limits at 108th, and then to 124th Avenue. We also have a small section of 208th Street from 132nd to the east city limits near Suez Creek Trail. And looking north-south, we're extending parking restrictions on 132nd and Lake Young's Way, starting at the south end to 36th Street, all the way up to the city limit line near Suez Creek. Similarly, on 116th, we're extending the parking restrictions from 227th Place North to 208th Street. And then we're also covering 124th Avenue between 192nd and 208th. So, in addition to these, we also have one small clerical correction to make. We're correcting a reference in 938, Chapter 145, which refers to Section 80920J rather than 30J, which does not exist, so. That's all I have for you today, I'm open and available for questions.
Thank you very much, any questions? Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Eric, did we let the, I guess the neighborhoods in this area know that we were going ahead with these restrictions?
Not for this particular one. There are very few homes that would actually front arterials.
So, they, and, but they don't know this change is coming, so I hope we'll be letting them know that it, you know, the change is coming, so. That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, any other questions or comments? In that case, I move to adopt ordinance number 4480, amending sections in Chapter 9.38 of the Kent City Code relating to parking restrictions in the Panther Lake area.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and, you know, I forgot that Councilmember Trotner was there. Did you, although we passed it, now, did you have any comments, council member?
I forgot her too.
I didn't, thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to move on on that one, we're gonna take that as the thumbs up. And, we are now gonna hear from Tony DiNati, we know that a lot of our work gets done with grants, and he's gonna tell us about another one.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair and council members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Tony DiNati, I'm the Conservation Coordinator here in the Public Works Department. Yeah, today I'm gonna talk to you about the grant that the city will be receiving from the Department of Ecology, this is our local solid waste financial assistance agreement, also known as LSWIFA. This is a two-year grant that the city receives retroactive back to July 1st and goes through June of 2025. The city will be receiving just over $170,000 on a cost basis as tasks are completed, and the required match will come from two of our other solid waste grants, as well as money from the drainage utility funds, or appropriate project-specific funds. Over the next two years, this grant funds our ever-popular Free Saturday Recycling Collection events.
Oh, yeah.
As well as our newly popular Friday Recycling Collection event, that also funds the cleanup of encampments on city-owned property, mainly drainage property or city right-of-way. So, these are funds that the city is really grateful to receive, and is dependent on to, to fund these ever-popular and important programs. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, I'm happy that we have this, you know, we have an issue, as witnessed here, with people who dump illegally, people who just leave trash out, throw trash out of their window. We have considerable fines for that, but the problem is, we have to be able to catch the people as they're doing it. And it's, you know, a blight on the city, so I know that it's very popular, I've utilized the recycling events myself, so, money well spent. Let's see, so, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the Department of Ecology, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept that grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And then, is it Kira or Kyra? Kira. Okay, we're going to now hear about some vegetation control up at a management plant up at Lake Meridian, we've heard about it over on West Hill at Lake Fenwick, now it's over on the East Hill. Their turn.
Hello, my name is Kira Kaiser, I work in the Environmental Department in Public Works, and this time I'm presenting our proposed application for the Department of Ecology's Integrated Aquatic Invasive Vegetation Management Plan, IAVMP grant. The photo of Lake Meridian here, from this summer, shows the water lily problem near the boat launch. Not shown in the photo is the heavy milfoil infestation in the lake. This grant is funded by the state fee collected from boat trailers, and is intended for managing freshwater invasive plants in water bodies with public boat launch ramps. It covers IAVMP preparation, implementation, and early infestation projects. The city of Kent is applying for the IAVMP Preparation Grant to update the existing 2002 IAVMP. The updated plan will include a map of the aquatic invasive vegetation on Lake Meridian, and reevaluate weed control options for Eurasian water milfoil and white water lily, the two main problematic invasive plant species in Lake Meridian. This plan will include a cost comparison of weed control options, recommend the best option, and describe how the best option will be implemented. White water lily is a floating aquatic plant that grows in water three to six feet deep. There are two types of water lily on Lake Meridian. White water lily, right here, which is both widespread and invasive, and yellow pond lily, which is native and limited in extent. So they look pretty similar, but...
Now, look at that.
Here, you can see him.
Okay.
And the presence of lilies is problematic, because they get tangled up in boat propellers, make it difficult for boats to pass through, they clog up the lake outlet, and reduce oxygen levels for the fish during fall dieback. Eurasian water milfoil is a submerged aquatic plant that grows in water up to 18 feet deep, you can see right here, very feathery. Eurasian water milfoil grows in dense mats, making swimming unpleasant and crowding out native aquatic vegetation. This species harms water quality by decreasing oxygen and releasing excess nutrients into the lake when the plant decomposes. The grant provides up to $30,000, a 25% match in money or time is required, and the match will come from time spent by city staff and members of the Lake Meridian Community Association. Any questions?
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, Kyra, sure, that's why I'm leaving. Is this something that we try to do every year? Because I know this is an ongoing problem with Lake Fenwick, Lake Meridian, but here we get a grant, but if we didn't have the grant, wouldn't we do something anyway?
Uh, no, so the Kent Parks Department currently manages only the swimming area of the lake. So, which is a very small area of the lake, and they hire someone to remove the aquatic weeds from there. But, the rest of the lake is not managed by the city on, for aquatic weeds on a regular basis, just because funding limitations.
And this aside, other than those two lakes that we've mentioned, does Lake Sawyer get entered into this at all?
Uh, we are just applying for this grant for Lake Meridian.
Correct. But it is a big problem on Lake Sawyer too, I just wondered...
Um, I'm not familiar with Lake Sawyer.
Okay.
Yeah, Lake Sawyer is not in the city.
It's, it's outside the city?
It's outside the city.
Yeah, I guess it is, never mind.
And, and I was just gonna add to what Kira said, this, this was discussed with us by the Lake Meridian Community Association, this was something that, that we were doing in partnership with them.
Good.
Oh, so it's not a, it's not an annual thing, like Kira mentioned, the last plan is about 20 years old.
Oh, gosh.
To do for an update.
Mike, just before you leave, would you also introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Mike McTudis, I'm the Environmental Engineering Manager for the city.
Thank you.
Just one...
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kira or Mike, so this funding is for just the plan, or also implementation of it?
Uh, just the plan.
Just the plan. So what are we going to do to actually work on the plan? Like, are we going to look at funding next year, or are you gonna work with just the association to see if they will do something about it?
We would take a look at what, what the plan comes up with, what the solutions are gonna be, and how expensive they'll be.
Okay.
And then we'll be looking for grant money to do the implementation.
Thank you.
So one option, the Department of Ecology here, we're applying for the IAVMP, their planning grant, they also have an implementation grant, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Laramore.
I was gonna say thank you, I really enjoyed the visual...
Oh, yeah, you can see him closer.
And it's not often I'm gonna say Public Works, not every time, but yeah, that was really helpful to tell the story.
Council President?
Yeah, Councilmember Laramore stole my thunder, I like to show and tell, so good job.
Oh, yeah. And these are just, you know, a few, imagine, multiplied.
Anytime.
Okay, so show and tell good for most items. Sometimes pictures will just do when it comes to public work, I'm thinking of the fan blades and, yeah. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to say it was just for information, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is it for us, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher, that ends our operation meeting for tonight. We're gonna take a short recess, and we're gonna resume at 5:15. Thank you.
Okay, we get started here. Hey, welcome to Kent City Council Workshop. We got three items on the agenda tonight. King County Sexual Assault Resource Center and a police contact application. And then we'll wrap it up with the Green River update. So we're going to start off with the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. Mayor Ralph, you want to kick this off for us, please?
I am. Thank you, Council President. So council members, you are all very familiar with King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, an amazing organization that's been providing services to families and survivors of sexual assault in King County for many decades. You have also all met Mary Ellen Stone, who is, for a few more minutes, the Executive Director. No, all done. Okay. All right, completely. All right, so there you go. She's been at our council meetings and served the organization for over four decades. So really, really grateful for the work that she's done. We are also very excited to meet tonight the new Executive Director. And I am going to call up one of my favorite council members ever, Dennis Higgins, to make the introductions and tell us a little bit about the organization and introduce Kate to us.
To all of you, my former colleagues, it's really good to see you all. I'm Dennis Higgins, a former Kent City Council member, Kent resident, and a proud board member of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, also known as KASARC. And KASARC has been around for over 43 years. It was founded as King County Rape Relief. Mary Ellen Stone, as you mentioned, has taken her long and well-deserved retirement after 43 years. And the Board of Directors of KASARC just got through a process in the past few months of recruiting nationwide to find her successor. And we're really, really happy to have found Kate Krug, who can introduce herself and her past experience. But she's been on the job now for five weeks. Mary Ellen has not disappeared. She is advising Kate for a few more weeks until the end of the year, and then she will sail off into the sunset. I think we'll probably see her at the breakfast, though, which is March 13, 2024. With that, I'm going to step aside and invite you to meet our new CEO of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, Kate Krug.
So thank you, Mayor Ralph, and Kent City Council for inviting me here today and share a bit more about myself and importantly, a bit more about KASARC. And I also just want to say thank you, Dennis, for introducing me to this wonderful group and sharing with me earlier today a little bit more about this community and how well-loved it is. So, you know, for those of you that don't know me, and many of you do not, this is the first time I'm meeting all of you. So my name is Kate Krug, and I am the new CEO and, as Dennis said, on Week Five at KASARC. I've worked in human services for more than 18 years, focused mainly on fundraising and supporting organizations that provide services to victims of domestic violence, providing veteran services, housing and homelessness, health and safety inequities, but always through a lens of gender equity and paying close attention to those who are experiencing gender-based violence. I am so incredibly proud to be part of the KASARC family and working with a staff of about 70 people strong, with individuals that have such a breadth of knowledge and expertise. And they are just some of the warmest, kindest individuals I've ever had the pleasure of working with. From the 24-hour resource line, which will be fully staffed every day this year, including on Thanksgiving and all of the upcoming holidays, to our legal advocacy, prevention, and outreach and clinical services, the community's need for service continues to increase year after year. In fact, since 2017, which marks the beginning of the Me Too movement, KASARC saw a 22% increase for requests for services. Last year in Kent, we provided services to 311 individuals. 37% of those individuals were under the age of 18. And it's thanks to this council and this room here today that we're able to do so. We receive about $28,000 a year in support for those individuals that are seeking services, and we're so incredibly grateful for your partnership. And I have a 2022 Kent Client Service Demographic Sheet that I'm going to share with all of you. But many of the main callouts is not only that total number of clients, the 311, and the 37% children are under the age of 18, but it also addresses ethnicity, immigrant status, homelessness, race, and gender. So all of that information I'll pass out to you as well. Additionally, we have our Be Loud buttons. And that is for our Be Loud Breakfast, which is on March 13, which of course I hope all of you are able to join us with. What I'm most excited to share with you today, of course, are those Be Loud buttons because I ask you all to continue joining KASARC and being loud. Be loud and talk about sexual assault. Be loud and let survivors know that they're not defined by their assault. Be loud and start a conversation about sexual assault. And today, as we're being loud together, I want to make sure that you can hear me the loudest when I say "thank you" and how I'm excited to work with all of you. So thank you again for including us today. Sure?
Kate, welcome. Thank you. We're really excited to see what amazing things you do with an organization that I think I can easily say we are all very supportive of and very thankful for as well. So you will continue to see support from all of us here at the city of Kent. We'll see you at the breakfast. And when we get back to Sexual Assault Awareness Month, you'll also see an invitation coming from my office to come for the proclamation, which we do every year, to make sure that we are letting everyone know that there's amazing survivors of sexual assault out there. And they are survivors because of the work that KASARC is doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say ditto to what the mayor said. Congratulations. You know, one thing about going into an organization is making sure you have a good body of people surrounded by you. And I tell you, you can't ask for a better person than my good friend Dennis Higgins. He just, he, a lot of us are successful today because he mentored most of us, including me, right? So stay close to him, and you will be very, very successful. So congratulations. I'm so happy for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember, we good? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Next thing, take care. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item is police contact application. Eric, how you doing, sir?
Very well, thank you. You, Councilman, Mayor? I'm Eric Doherty. I'm the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer at the Kent Police Department. And today I wanted to show you and talk a little bit about our new police contact app. I'd been here previously when we were developing it and talked about it a little bit, but now it's out there in the hands of all the officers and they're using it. So I was going to walk you through it a little bit. So this came about because we identified some gaps we had in our data collection, particularly around proactive contacts that officers made. So we're talking about times when it's not a 911 call, but the officer initiates a contact, whether it be a traffic stop or an investigative stop. The officer will get on the radio, put themselves out with someone. But if it doesn't turn into a full police report, we didn't have a good way of capturing what had occurred. And we wanted to come up with something that was going to be easy and efficient for the officers to use, so they weren't going to have to go back to the station, write a full report every time they made any kind of contact. But that would still allow us to capture demographic data, location data, and the general idea of what our officers are out there doing. The application runs on the ARCJS survey 123 application. It's basically a way that you can design your own input fields. I designed it, and I don't have a lot of technical skills, so it's a pretty easy drag-and-drop, label-it, and I'll walk you through the fields. And again, it's for proactive contacts. Every patrol officer and every officer who has an enforcement position has it on their phone right now. They have a unique login. So when they go and log a contact, it goes up to the ARCJS servers. I have access to all of the data, and then it's under their name. And it captures demographic information because, again, we would get a lot of questions about, you know, how often do you give warnings on traffic stops to, you know, certain races versus others? How often are you contacting people? And typically, we would say, "we don't know. We don't track it," which wasn't a sufficient answer. So this will let us answer those questions. So this is what it looks like. There's a little simulated phone on the left. And so when the officer brings it up after they make a contact, they have to enter the incident number. Currently, our computer dispatch system won't talk directly with the app. We think and we're hoping that that's going to be able to in the future so that that will directly import. So that's the only field where they have to enter anything. And they can either do it on their phone, or they can also do it in the car computer if they log in. It's just officer preference. And so as they go through it, they just have to tap the screen on any of the options there. Hopefully, you can see it from there. So we have three options. The main kind of contacts they would be making outside of a dispatch. So a traffic stop, on-view enforcement, and that's pretty broad. That's any time that they're going to be investigating anything, any time they're even going to tell someone to move along because they're loitering. You know, it doesn't mean like it's a huge crime, but anything where they're intending to enforce a law or investigate something, they would select that option outside of a traffic stop. And the last one...
The Executive Director, no, all done. I'm looking, okay. All right, completely. All right, so there you go. She's been at our council meetings and served the organization for over four decades, so really, really grateful for the work that she's done. We are also very excited to meet tonight the new Executive Director, and I am going to call up one of my favorite council members ever, Dennis Higgins, to make the introductions and tell us a little bit about the organization and introduce Kate to us.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph. To all of you, my former colleagues, it's really good to see you all. I'm Dennis Higgins, former Kent City Councilmember, Kent resident, and a board, a proud board member of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, also known as KSARC. And KSARC has been around for over 43 years. It was founded as King County Rape Relief. Mary Ellen Stone, as you mentioned, has taken her long and well-deserved retirement after 43 years, and the Board of Directors of KSARC just got through a process in the past few months of recruiting nationwide to find her successor, and we're really, really happy to have found Kate Krug, who can introduce herself and her past experience, but she's been on the job now for five weeks. Mary Ellen has not disappeared. She is advising Kate for a few more weeks until the end of the year, and then she will sail off into the sunset. I think we'll probably see her at the breakfast, though, which is March 13th, 2024. With that, I'm going to step aside and invite you to meet our new CEO of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, Kate Krug.
So, thank you, Mayor Ralph, and Kent City Council for inviting me here today and share a bit more about myself, and importantly, a bit more about KSARC. And I also just want to say thank you, Dennis, for introducing me to this wonderful group and sharing with me earlier today a little bit more about this community and how well-loved it is. So, you know, for those of you that don't know me, and many of you do not, this is the first time I'm meeting all of you. So, my name is Kate Krug, and I am the new CEO, and as Dennis said, on Week Five at KSARC. I've worked in human services for more than 18 years, focused mainly on fundraising and supporting organizations that provide services to victims of domestic violence, providing veteran services, housing and homelessness, health and safety inequities, but always through a lens of gender equity and paying close attention to those who are experiencing gender-based violence. I am so incredibly proud to be part of the KSARC family and working with a staff of about 70 people strong, with individuals that have such a breadth of knowledge and expertise, and they're just some of the warmest, kindest individuals I've ever had the pleasure of working with. From the 24-hour resource line, which will be fully staffed every day this year, including on Thanksgiving and all of the upcoming holidays, to our legal advocacy, prevention, and outreach, and clinical services, the community's need for service continues to increase year after year. In fact, since 2017, which marks the beginning of the Me Too movement, KSARC saw a 22% increase for requests for services. Last year in Kent, we provided services to 311 individuals. Thirty-seven percent of those individuals were under the age of 18, and it's thanks to this council and this room here today that we're able to do so. We receive about $28,000 a year in support for those individuals that are seeking services, and we're so incredibly grateful for your partnership. And I have a 2022 Kent Client Service Demographics Sheet that I'm going to share with all of you, but many of the main callouts is not only that total number of clients, the 311, and the 37% children are under the age of 18, but it also addresses ethnicity, immigrant status, homelessness, race, and gender. So, all of that information I'll pass out to you as well. Additionally, we have our Be Loud buttons, and that is for our Be Loud Breakfast, which is on March 13th, which of course I hope all of you are able to join us with. What I'm most excited to share with you today, of course, are those Be Loud buttons, because I ask you all to continue joining KSARC and being loud. Be loud and talk about sexual assault. Be loud and let survivors know that they're not defined by their assault. Be loud and start a conversation about sexual assault. And today, as we're being loud together, I want to make sure that you can hear me the loudest when I say "thank you" and how I'm excited to work with all of you. So, thank you again for including us today.
Kate, welcome. Thank you. We're really excited to see what amazing things you do with an organization that I think I can easily say we are all very supportive of and very thankful for as well. So, you will continue to see support from all of us here at the city of Kent. We'll see you at the breakfast, and when we get back to Sexual Assault Awareness Month, you'll also see an invitation coming from my office to come for the proclamation, which we do every year, to make sure that we are letting everyone know that there's amazing survivors of sexual assault out there, and they are survivors because of the work that KSARC is doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say ditto to what the mayor said. Congratulations. You know, one thing about going into an organization is making sure you have a good body of people surrounded by you, and I tell you, you can't ask for a better person than my good friend, Dennis Higgins. He just, he, a lot of us are successful today because he mentored most of us, including me, right? So, stay close to him, and you will be very, very successful. So, congratulations. I'm so happy for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember, we good? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Next thing, take care. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next item is police contact application. Eric, how you doing, sir?
Very well, thank you. You counsel mayor. I'm Eric Doherty. I'm the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer at the Kent Police Department, and today I wanted to show you and talk a little bit about our new police contact app. I'd been here previously when we were developing it and talked about it a little bit, but now it's out there in the hands of all the officers, and they're using it. So, I was gonna walk you through it a little bit. So, this came about because we identified some gaps we had in our data collection, particularly around proactive contacts that officers made. So, we're talking about times when it's not a 911 call, but the officer initiates a contact, whether it be a traffic stop or an investigative stop. The officer will get on the radio, put themselves out with someone, but if it doesn't turn into a full police report, we didn't have a good way of capturing what had occurred. And we wanted to come up with something that was going to be easy and efficient for the officers to use, so they weren't gonna have to go back to the station, write a full report every time they made any kind of contact. But that would still allow us to capture demographic data, location data, and the general idea of what our officers are out there doing. The application runs on the ARC GIs Survey 123 application. It's basically a way that you can design your own input fields. I designed it, and I don't have a lot of technical skills, so it's a pretty easy drag-and-drop, label it, and I'll walk you through the fields. And again, it's for proactive contacts. Every patrol officer and every officer who has an enforcement position has it on their phone right now. They have a unique login, so when they go and log a contact, it goes up to the ARC GIs servers. I have access to all of the data, and then it's under their name. And it captures demographic information, because again, we would get a lot of questions about, you know, how often do you give warnings on traffic stops to, you know, certain races versus others? How often are you contacting people? And typically, we would say, "we don't know, we don't track it," which wasn't a sufficient answer. So, this will let us answer those questions. So, this is what it looks like. There's a little simulated phone on the left, and so when the officer brings it up after they make a contact, they have to enter the incident number. Currently, our computer dispatch system won't talk directly with the app. We think and we're hoping that that's going to be able to in the future, so that that will directly import. So, that's the only field where they have to enter anything, and they can either do it on their phone, or they can also do it in the car computer if they log in. It's just officer preference. And so, as they go through it, they just have to tap the screen on any of the options there. Hopefully, you can see it from there, but... So, we have three options. The main kind of contacts they would be making outside of a dispatch, so a traffic stop, on-view enforcement, and that's pretty broad. That's any time that they're gonna be investigating anything, any time they're even gonna tell someone to move along because they're loitering, you know. It doesn't mean like it's a huge crime, but anything where they're intending to enforce a law or investigate something, they would select that option outside of a traffic stop. And the last one, we call community contact, because a lot of times our officers, when they're doing these proactive contacts, it's literally just a friendly contact with the public, but we wanted to track that also, so we can see, you know, how often we're doing it, where we're doing it, so that, you know, we make sure that we're having those kind of contacts all throughout the city. And so, those are the three options that they would select on that first screen. And then based on the option that they pick, it will bring up additional screens. Sorry, I shouldn't make this a little bit bigger. So, if you look at the one on the left, so that's if they choose a traffic infraction, it brings up four options. Basically, did you give them a ticket, or did you give them a warning? Did the car just take off on you? Because it's happening so much that we wanted to have that as an option. And so, now with this app, we can just, with one click of a button, look and see how often that's happening. And then the last one is a criminal arrest or citation, because we want to know how often that we're making routine traffic stops and it's turning into something bigger. Not only how often it's happening, but where it's happening, because if it's, you know, officers are getting more arrests for warrants or something in a certain area, we would like to know that. The middle screen shows you, once you click one of those options, it will then bring up demographic questions. So, the first one it asks is the sex that's on the individual's license, and then the race is perceived by the officer. And then, once they click those buttons, that's it. And so, the officers, once they're used to it, it's maybe five to 10 seconds of clicking on this, and now we've logged what the officer did, where they did it, and demographic information on who they contacted. If they choose one of the other options, it brings up these collapsible grids, and there's four options, and it's basically asking, when you contacted these people, did you detain them or not? Because we want to know that information. When we're out there contacting people, even if we're investigating something, we don't always or even typically detain someone. And so, we want to know when we're out there, how often is it happening and who is it happening to that we make that decision to detain someone? And that doesn't mean handcuffs. That just means the person's not free to go, or doesn't perceive that they're free to go. And so, if they click on any of those, it brings up a grid, and they can just select by racial demographic how many people they contacted. And so, they can, you know, have people in all four categories if they contacted a big group. It currently has four plus, just because I didn't want to have too many buttons and too many options. I didn't want to have them enter a number. If we find that we're often contacting groups, we can change that and get a specific number. But it's rare enough, I think, that it's a four plus, that that should still give us good statistics. And then within the ARC GIs online system itself, you can do some fairly basic graphing and looking at different statistics. And so, it'll show you how often you're doing each thing. It'll bring up the demographics. It's very easy to export all the data into an Excel spreadsheet to do more advanced analysis of it. And so, we can set up to run reports where we just export to an Excel spreadsheet, and then we have the report that we want all set up. And so, you know, monthly, quarterly, whatever we want, we can run these reports and take a look at what's been going on. And then, because it's built on that ARC GIs system, it easily integrates with other GIs maps. And so, as we get our calls for service, our crime data, information about the city, so areas, you know, of poverty, or any question that we want to ask about how we're interacting with different areas of the city, we can easily overlay the maps together, and that'll help us internally know, hey, are we using our resources and spending our time in the places where it makes most sense? Once we do that, is it effective? Are we, you know, seeing a difference in what we want to see a difference in? Some things as simple as we can overlay traffic accidents onto the map and see if we're doing traffic enforcement places where there's more traffic accidents. And then the app is expandable. So, I created it as basic as I possibly could, so that it would be very easy for officers to learn it, so it wasn't a big cumbersome system. When we talked to some different vendors, they gave us these 12-page, fill out all this different stuff, and we're like, "that's, you know, not gonna be good." But, the nice thing about this is I can easily add something. So, if we decide down the road, we want to add, you know, "did you do a consent search on the contact?" That's just one field I can drag-and-drop, and it automatically updates everyone's app, and so the next time they do it, that option will be there. And so, the GIs system, it stores it all. Currently, I have access to it. IT has access to it. And then, we'll generate reports based on our internal questions, but then also those questions that come from you or the public. We will be able to much better answer those once we've had it running for a while. We started, late August is when we first started getting in the hands of officers. Through September, as, you know, the different crews came in, we got people trained up. October's really the first month that we had it fully running, and that's not a lot of data to really get a good answer about what's happening, but once a few more months go by, maybe first quarter next year, we should be able to start really taking a look at the data and seeing what it's telling us. Questions?
Thank you very much, Eric. I'm sure there are a lot of questions around this here. There was a couple of councilmembers been asking about this here, so, Councilmember McCoy, followed by Lomber.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for this. I think I'm very, very excited to see this actually implemented and we're able to gather some data. My question is about the community contact. Do we have like something in there that says like positive feedback, or do we have a positive contact, or?
Yeah, so I mean, it's not on the app exactly, but it's how they were trained. So, it's gotta be a contact where you are purely, you know, the example I give is like handing out stickers to kids, or, you know, doing that type of thing. So, if you're running someone's name, you know, even if you're not really detaining them, you're investigating at that point, because you're looking for warrants. If you are telling someone to do something, you know, that would not count. We call them officer-friendly contacts, and most people kind of know what that is, and people sort of set out with the intention of doing it. "I just want to say hi to this person that's out mowing their lawn," those type of contacts. Anything that even slightly tilted towards investigation or enforcement, it would go under the law enforcement.
Thank you. And then, I think it'll be great to get some data, just to look at it in March, maybe? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the longer it goes, the better the data is, but we can start to get at least some idea, I would guess, probably first quarter.
Yeah, I think that's great. So, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm really, really excited to see this.
Yeah, so first question, sort of, you know, I realize this is the first month, but sort of, how is it going as far as becoming a habit to use this? Or are we seeing, you know, uptick in logging, and is it seeming to be in a positive direction?
Yeah, and I would say there is a slight difference between the new, younger officers and the people who've been here for 15 years, doing it one way, remembering to pull it out. You know, the other thing we see a little bit is people who do more contacts, they're doing it fine because they remember, but if you only do two or three of this type of contact over, you know, a couple months, you might forget more. And so, it's part of what we're doing right now, is building that habit, because it is a completely new thing that we're adding to people. But yeah, we're seeing an increase in usage, and overall, you know, people seem to be remembering, and there doesn't seem to be any resistance to it. People find it very easy to use, and it's not cumbersome.
And then, just a comment. Very excited that you kind of took this upon, and, you know, in IT industry, like we call it low-code development or citizen development, and really, it's a great way to, you know, get something to market fast and very customized. And so, that's what I see here. Just kudos, hats off to the chief for supporting this, and to you for developing this. It really is, you know, a way for us to get the data we need and not be terribly burdensome. Like you said, you know, some of the systems could be really too much overkill and not be adopted, but this is something that seems really simple and slick and can be adopted well, so.
Thank you.
I give them a lot of credit. I wouldn't say develop, you know, developer, right? So.
Like the low code. Very low code.
Councilmember Venture?
Thank you very much. I just want to join the bandwagon and say, this is something we've been waiting for, for a long time, and I am so happy that you took it on and got it done, and just look forward to seeing what the data comes, what data comes back. Would you also, kind of just tagging on, let us know the feedback that you get from officers also, as when you get ready to come back and report to us, how they're feeling? Like you're saying, the new officers, it's just, you know, just something else that they're doing, no big deal. But just let us know, after people have gotten into the flow and they see how easy it actually is, that it doesn't take up a long time, take a long time. It's not like writing another report, how that comes out, so.
Yeah, for sure. And I got good feedback during the testing phase, like those collapsible menus. That was an idea from one of my testers, you know, because initially, they weren't collapsed, and they were scrolling through them. And so, that sort of feedback during the testing phase helped make it just as streamlined as possible.
Then, this is just another example of the class that you developed this. Very glad that you're in the position that you are now. Thank you.
Hey, just one comment. This is another example, and I know councilmember had brought this to the chief and the mayor's attention about the ability to be able to do this here, right? So, I think this is another example of, you know, listening and gathering data and putting this up into implementation phase. So, thank you, Councilman Ralph and the chief. So, definitely forward to the data as we collect, like I say, more data to collect, the better story we can tell. So, I appreciate that, and thanks again, Eric, for all you do. Appreciate it. Are we good? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, last but not least, the Green River update. How you doing, Mike?
Good.
All righty.
This is Kim. Good evening. I'm Mike McTudis. I'm the Environmental Engineering Manager. Good evening, Council President, Mayor, councilmembers. I am going to give you just an annual update on what's happened with the Green River this year and what we're looking forward to for next year. So, it was a lot of the same topics I've talked about in the past, but just updates about what's happened and what to expect. So, I'll go through, talk about the watershed overview, and you all have heard this, so I'll go through that very quickly. Some updates on the dam, the Howard Hansen Dam, the flood control district, the winter season that's already started, and then some of the habitat improvements that have been completed this last year and that we're moving forward with. So, we'll talk about the geography of the watershed and what we're doing for clean water in the city. So, the city of Kent is in three parts of the watershed, actually. Of the, we have the east hill portion goes into Sues Creek, which is in part classified as the Middle Green River, and then we have the most of the city going into the Lower Green River, which is the flat area through the valley. So, you have different types of habitat, different types of flow, which is why it's separated out. And then, a small portion of the city up in the west hill goes directly west into Puget Sound. Then, Howard Hansen Dam has just under half of the watershed upstream of it, so the majority of the watershed is upstream of the dam, which is controlled by the dam. And then, that's just a closer view of how the river flows through the city. It comes up the east hill, along the base of the east hill, and then it went along Auburn, and then it cuts across the valley, and then goes up the west side of the valley. So, we are hydraulically separated from Auburn for the most part, except for the portion of the Kent that you see on the south side of the river, just under the tidal lower green river. Some of the programs that we do for water quality, we do quite a bit of work in the, throughout the city. We have something, one of, two of the newer things that have come up are the one in the top middle, the Shut the Lid program that we've been working on regionally, which is to help people try to remember and get into their practice to shut their dumpster lid, to keep the rain out of the dumpsters, because it leaches out into the storm drain system, which goes down into the creeks. And then, in the upper right, there have been a lot more fuel thieves stealing even from city vehicles out in our parking lots here, as well as private vehicles. They try to get into the fuel tanks at first, and if they can't, then they punch a hole in them, which is where it makes the big mess, and you can see our crews out here putting down the materials to try and get that out of the, or keep it out of our stormwater system and out of the creek systems. And then, we have our Planet Protectors Summit, which is again scheduled for this coming March. We've been doing that for over 20 years, designed for third graders up at Green River College. My daughter went when she was small, and she still remembers that, so that's been, and we get people who apply for internships and jobs here who will remember going to that also over the years. That's been a big event for us, as well as the programs you've heard about, the Adopt a Street and Keeping It Clean with Kent, which Tony and our operations departments participate in heavily. I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about the Howard Hansen Dam. We have an annual update from the Corps of Engineers every year about how it's gonna be functioning going into the winter season, and the good news is, again, that it is functioning normally. So, everything that should hold back, they're operating it as if it will. So, no problems like we've had at some times in the distant past now. One of the big items that they are working on, new items, is the downstream fish passage, and I mentioned at the last update that they had been authorized for $220 million through the Water Resources Development Act, through Congress. So, that, towards the project, which is estimated at $878 million. What they did this last year is they did a lot of the hydraulic testing. They're working through the design of this fish passage. They've got to get the fish from the upstream side of the dam going downstream, and then the water on the upstream side can fluctuate over 100 feet in depth. So, the fish want to be at a certain depth, but the water goes up and down quite a bit, so they've got to get them past the dam. So, they're doing a lot of tests to make sure that the fish will survive the trip downstream, so they can design it, so that, so that they can get a really high survival rate. So, that happened this last year. And they are looking for an additional $50 million federally to keep the design going. And they are still on track. Everything I've heard is that they are on schedule to have this completed by 2030, which is what their deadline has been in there, and they're keeping up with that. A few updates from the King County Flood Control District. We do quite a bit of work. We've partnered with them on a number of levy improvements, as well as getting grant money for fish habitat improvements. There are some things that are changing, and as well as some of the education, and we work with them during the winter. Outside of capital projects, we work with them during the winter for flood management, for working with them on notices to the public and flood warnings and those types of things. So, related to capital projects, what this chart shows, I just put some of the main projects that are going on in the lower green that do affect Kent, and how much is forecast to be spent on those over the '24 through '29, the six-year period. So, the Black River Pump Station is really the main one in the lower green, and that is a complete retrofit of the Black River Pump Station. So, changing out the large pumps that are in there were put in there from tugboats from the early 1970s, so those are being replaced. Some of the main pumps, the smaller pumps that they use on a more daily basis are being replaced, as well as retrofits to the fish passage, which should have more Coho able to come up into the Mill Creek and Garrison Creek systems up in Kent. They'll have a more up-to-date fish passage system when this is done in the next six to seven years, but that is a very, as well as seismic retrofits of the main building. So, that's a very expensive project, as well as, we have the two large projects that we need, the city needs, to be able to accredit the right bank of the levy, look as you're going downstream, to be able to get a fully federally accredited levy. We've done a lot of projects along the river, but we have the two big ones left, the Signature Point Levy and the Milwaukee Two Levy. Those have had money budgeted through the Flood Control District, but I would note that all of these numbers are going to go up. The numbers that you see related to, well, really, all four of these projects are gonna be higher as we go into the future. We are working on updating those with the Flood Control District, the two projects at the bottom. The Des Moines Project protects Kent, but is in Tuck Willa, so we're very indirectly involved in that, but very heavily involved, because if there is a problem at the Des Moines Levy, there's potential to have water go all the way upstream to 228th Street in the city, in a worst-case scenario. But Signature Point and Milwaukee Two are at the, towards the upper end of Kent, so we are leading those projects in partnership with the Flood Control District. What this chart shows, this is a Flood Control District graph, and this shows the amounts that have been spent since the beginning of the Flood Control District. 2008 is at the left side of the graph, going all the way to 2029 at the right side. So, the bars are the amounts either expended or projected to be expended, and then the gray line that you'll see there is, let's see if I can point it out, the gray line is the revenue of the district. So, right now, that's right about $60 million a year in revenue going into the district. So, you can see the amounts expended have been going up over the So you can see the amounts expended have been going up over the, higher than the revenue for the last several years. And then the, the important line is the cash balance peaked a few years ago and has been dropping very quickly, forecast to go down near zero by the end of 2024. So that's by the end of next year, the forecast is that there will only be $9 million of their cash balance left, with forecasted expenditures, as well as potential increases in projects going into the future. So the Flood District just did adopt their budget for 2024 this last week. They did not include an increase in the revenue for next year, for 2024, but they are going to be working on, they, they know of the issue. They're going to be working very closely with, with Mayor Ralph as the Chair of the Flood Control District Advisory Committee, and working through, through staff for, for the, the cost updates to see what the, the path forward is going to be. So there's the, the obvious alternatives. You can increase the, their revenue is from a property tax levy, so there's a potential that you can raise the levy, you can sell bonds, or you can cut projects. You can cut your expenditures. Those are really the, the three main options going forward. And so there will be a lot of work on that over the next year. Yes?
So, Mike, thank you for that explanation. I did, so in follow-up, this last year, the advisory committee, SCA members, then cities like the city of Kent have our permanent seats there. The recommendation letter that came out of the Flood Control District Advisory Board was that they aligned funding with the projects, which is not keeping funding that, that revenue source flat. So we are, as an advisory board, very, very concerned about, as you can see, that pink line going down there to zero next year. These are really expensive projects at Black River Pump Station, the projects, and this is, these are the ones that Mike put up there, are just the projects in Kent. So there's projects across the entire county and across the entire system. So there is a lot of concern about the ability to fund these really necessary projects to protect all the investments everyone has in their communities, whether it be homes or other infrastructure. For us, a lot of our businesses are impacted by the river. So I will say very publicly, I am disappointed that the Flood Control Board, the King County councilmembers acting with their flood control hats on, chose to not make a change. We also talked a lot at the advisory committee about scope. So there's a variety of different grant programs and those kinds of things that, that we had talked about, maybe we need to cut those back in order to fund projects. Those changes were not made. So next year, when we start the advisory committee back up again in the spring, it is something that I am pretty confident that the members of the advisory committee are going to be committed to, once again, delivering the message. Our letter the last couple of years has been really clear. We've got to do something about this. And there was some resistance, as you can see, that high peak where the fund balance was, was high. And so I think that there was some comfort built into that. Look, you've got so much money, you're not spending it. As we are all very aware of here in Kent, these are multi-year projects, so it's important to have that balance, because then it gets spent down. So now it's been spent completely down, and I don't know where, where we come to recover it and keep projects on track. So I will keep you all posted of the work that that advisory committee is doing, but it's, something's going to have to change, or we're not going to be able to see these projects completed. Thanks for letting me interrupt, Mike.
Yes. Well, one of the, I'll, I'll talk about a couple other things that the Flood Control District is working on. They have finished the draft environmental impact statement process for their Lower Green River Corridor Flood Hazard Management Plan. So that is a long-term plan that they're looking to, to last, to, to set the, set the, the plan for the, the Flood Control District for decades to come in the lower green. So we are, we, we did submit a comment letter on that draft EIS, and they will be, the plan right now is to, for them to issue a final EIS responding to all the comments. And there was, the, the, the report that was issued, it was about 1,800 pages worth of comments were submitted. So there were, there were a lot of comments, a lot of interest in what's happening in the lower green. And so they'll be working on the final EIS to come in 2024, and then start working on the plan after that. Lower Green River Levy Project was completed this last year, so that was a, a very big accomplishment. That was over $50 million for that project. We had a, a really nice ribbon cutting out there. The, the project is just amazing. The site is amazing. And one of the, one of the things that, that struck me is that all the pictures that you see of this, okay, it's a levy project, where's the levy? And it's in the backside of this. So it was a, it was a very good, a multi-benefit project, but on this project, the levy is out on the backside. The new park for Van Doren's is raised above the 100-year flood level on the river, so that is, that is protected, even though it is in front of the levy. And then we have the Big Salmon Habitat Project on the Riverward side of that, where the old Van Doren's Park was. And then at the upstream end, there was a flood wall put in, the white flood wall, where, that you can see there, as well as an additional trail to separate traffic from the pedestrians and bicyclists. But that is done now. So that was, that was a really great accomplishment, partnership for the city. And then some of the projects coming forward that I mentioned, Signature Point, we are still working with the Flood District on the, the, the amount of habitat that would be able to be placed within that project. There is, there's not a lot of space between the Signature Point Apartments and the river. So we are going to be working out what are the best ways to incorporate habitat in with the levy improvements, when the levy would be brought up to 500-year protection standard, which is about three to four feet above where it is right now. And that's just a, a concept of, of the, the Signature Point Apartments. The, the levy would go from Washington Avenue at the upstream end down to the Riverbend, the driving range at the downstream end. And then Milwaukee Two, the other one that I mentioned, and this one, the, the picture that I, that I have on here, this was the storm in February of 2020, where the, the water came up very close to the roadway, it's South 259th Street, it's just west of the Union Pacific Railroad track. So that is something that we watch very closely during the winter. And we have a concept for that also, which would include habitat, as well as a separated trail. That is another spot in the city where, at the current time, the road is shared between the pedestrians and bicyclists and the, and the traffic. So that's another place where we would incorporate a trail on top of the new levy. And then the McCoy Levy, which was damaged, that is just upstream of the Milwaukee Two Levy, that was damaged in the storm in 2020. The Corps of Engineers is still working on the repair for that. The city did install a levy behind that over 10 years ago, because we knew that levy was in a precarious position, as it was. So we have a higher levy behind it already, but the Corps is going to be working on, on removing the front levy and then incorporating the back levy into the federal system. And the other one is the Desamone Levy up in the, the Tukwila area that I mentioned. And one of the, the happen, things that happened this last year was, was not a really good thing for that project, was the, the Corps of Engineers was partnering with King County and the city of Tukwila to do a major repair, which would, which would bring a, a long stretch of that levy up to the 500-year standard. But just in the last couple of months, they, they notified Tukwila that they were not going to do that. They are only going to do, they, they will do the repairs that are necessary, but they will not go beyond that to, to make the improvements. So Kent, that is going to be on the King County and the Flood Control District to do that. And that is going to be a, a very expensive stretch. I think in the, in the chart I had, it had $35 million budgeted towards that project. So going into the winter forecast for this coming year, for what's already happened. So we have, the last few winters, we've been in La Nina Ocean Conditions, which means that the area along the, the equator has been lower temperature than normal. So what happened in La Nina was that the, the jet stream tends to go further north, and it pushes some of these atmospheric rivers up towards the northwest. So what's happening this year is we're having a pretty strong El Nino, which means equator temperatures in the ocean are a little bit higher than normal, which tends to pull the jet stream further south. So in general, you'll probably see some additional rainstorms down in California, Nevada, those areas. And the forecast is for, for our area, in general, above-average temperatures for the winter with, with normal precipitation. That is what they're forecasting for December, January, and February. You can still get the atmospheric rivers, and you know, they, they, they swing around up and down the coast, and those can still swing up, and we can still get hit with some pretty good storms like we did in September. We saw quite a bit of rain in September. We've already gotten our November rainfall. As of the 20th, we already have that. But in, in line with this forecast, we're supposed to get some rain today, but then it'll be generally dry until the end of the month, for the next 10 days or so. At least that's the forecast. River monitoring, this is in, this is the same as, as it's been. We have the, the city networks, where we have a few cameras along the river, as well as we partner with the USGS on some automatic gauges. And then we have staff gauges, and you can see a picture of one of them. So when we have our, our levy patrols out, if they need to go out, they can get an immediate measurement on what the water levels are. One of the things that I added to the, that, we still have the issue with the USGS, where they changed the gauge rating in 2020, when we had the big storm, so that the 12,000 cubic feet per second level in Auburn, which is what they use to release water from the Howard Hansen Dam, went from 67.0 to 67.8 in elevation. So they raised the 12,000 CFS flood level by eight tenths of a foot. And the reason that is so, so that's equivalent to about 1,500 CFS incapacity lost in the river. And so what that equates to down, in our downstream end at 200th Street, up at the north end of the city, because the river is narrower, so it forces the river higher. So that's about two feet in loss of the real, of river elevation towards our north end. So that's why it is a, it's a much bigger deal. I mean, eight tenths of a foot is a big deal, two feet in river elevation is a very big deal when you're at, when you only have two to three feet of freeboard in the river. So that is something we watch very closely. The USGS has still committed that when the river does come up, they'll do another very thorough check down in Auburn to make sure that their rating curve is, is accurate. We have our flood season preparedness. This is what we do every year. We coordinate with the, the local agencies, the regional agencies. We had our, our regional flood preparedness meetings with the Corps of Engineers, as well as with King County. We have flood barriers available in our, with our operations crews, who are trained to put those down, and, and they are aware of the low spots, the potential areas where the, the river may come up first. And we actively monitor the river. And then the, the last part of what I was going to talk about is just some of the habitat projects, that, one of the, the big things that we finished this last year, and there's a couple pictures there of the Downey Farmstead Restoration, which also has a very strong flood protection component to it. So the grading was done in 2022, and then the planting, there was an additional 30,000 plants, which were put in over last winter into this spring of 2023, so for a total of about 40,000 plants. And about half of those were grown at our own city nursery, so we saved quite a bit of money of that, on that, being able to grow our own plants. And you can see come the little lines where the, the irrigation is in there. And so we have a picture of how it looked to begin with. You had SR 516, this is looking east. You have Signature Point Apartments in the distance, and then this is the Downey Site, which was the old tree farm that was planted by the Russell Nursery once upon a time. And so we did use a lot of those trees in the site. We either used some of the logs in the fish habitat structures, or we mulched them to, to cover mulch on the site for erosion control and for weed protection. And you can see kind of where the, the, the water comes into the channels. This, this last winter was, was about the lowest winter I remember for water in the river, so we didn't have a lot of water coming into the channel like we expected. But I would, I would be very surprised if we had another winter that was quite that low. But we did have fish in there, even with the low amount of water that we had in there. So that was finished. Planting was finished, and there was a lot of growth, even through the fall, on a lot of the plants that, that were put out there. Two projects that we have, now that we, we're finished with the Downey Project, we're going into the maintenance side of that, so we have two projects moving forward, that we have grants from the state to, to move forward with feasibility studies. One is another area on lower, so you can see on, on, this is the, the downstream end of where the Lower Russell Levy was put in, and the, and the levy comes around the, the backside of where this other habitat area was, is going to be. So we have money from the state for feasibility for that. We're working on hiring a consultant for that, and that will be moving forward over the next several years towards design and construction. And then the Boeing Rock Habitat Enhancement, which is about eight tenths of a mile from South 212th Street, all the way up to Three Friends Fishing Hole up at South 200th Street. We were able to get grants that were awarded this year to do feasibility study on that as well. We've already done some analysis on this project and design about 10 years ago, so we have some, some basis already, so we're not starting from scratch. But this is a really prime area where we can take some of these, the very steep banks, and incorporate salmon habitat, as well as a secondary trail experience for people along the river. So it'll be another, a, a multi-benefit project that, that I'm really looking forward to. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Another fantastic report. Keeping things nice and clean. Any questions, comments? Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Council member, Council President voice. Thank you, Mike, for this presentation, and thank you for all the work that you do. I, I have concerns about the funding for all the projects that we have in our neighboring cities, so please let, please let us know what we can do to support that, and what we all need to be part of, you know, working towards, because these projects are very important to our community. So whatever we need to do, I'll be in. I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way, because this is, this is concerning. It's very concerning that we will not have the funding to work on projects that we've been working on for decades. It's been, you know, like a long time planning, right? And so, and, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman McCord. Any other comments to you? Hey, Mike, as usual, once again, hey, thanks for the report. Really appreciate it, and we're looking forward to these here, and we're a little bit late each year, right? So thanks a lot. I'll be done? Okay. Thank you, guys. We're going to recess until 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay? So our murders, and that number's low, that 54% is the ones that I could very